I'll go ahead and call to order the regular July meeting of the Rappahannock County Planning Commission, and we do have a quorum. There's one member of the Planning Commission who cannot be here due to a personal reason, and that is Ms. Ishii, the appointee from the Piedmont Voting District. If you would all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I understand from Ms. Summers, our zoning administrator, that the one item that is under Old Business, which we heard preliminarily at our last regular meeting, and that was the special exception permit, 21-06-01-Pew, which was a request to re-subdivide a parcel in a subdivision, they've asked that we defer any further consideration of their application until our August meeting. So with that... Sorry. With that, I would entertain a motion to adopt the agenda, striking the one item under Old Business.
Mr. Chairman, hopefully we have minutes either, so if we're striking that.
Sure. Good, good idea. So, thank you for that. We will also strike under adoption of the agenda, item one, adoption of minutes. I'm sorry, it's item C1, adoption of minutes. So we'll strike C1, and also under Old Business, F1. Mr. Kohler, is your motion still valid?
I'll move to include the minutes.
Okay.
A second.
Second, from Mr. Light? Any discussion? Thank you. All those in favor, say hi. Hi. We have no public hearing scheduled for tonight, so we will go straight to general public comment period, and I will go ahead and open the public comment period if anyone would like to speak, and as always, state your name and your voting district. And you can speak at some length tonight, because we don't have a big audience, if you wish. Within reason. Oh, wait, you're... What's that? Okay. No one. Okay, I will go ahead and close the public comment period. Thank you very much. And we are on to new business, and this is a preliminary review of a request for rezoning, request 21-07-01, Mountainside Properties of Virginia, amending proffers related to Tax Map 28-48B, 49, and 52. And I think we'll just start, maybe Ms. Summers, would you want to give us an overview?
Yes.
And then we can hear from the applicant and the applicant's counsel. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mountainside Properties LLC is privately located at 12625 Highway in Washington, identified by Tax Map number 24, lot 48B, 49, 52. The lot is 4.624 acres in size, and is currently zoned general commercial. The property was originally rezoned in 1989 from agricultural to commercial. In 1993, Faith Mountain amended the proffers from 1989 and to construct a 20,000 square foot building approved by the board. In 2007, Crowning Construction again amended the proffers to be approved for a construction company office and a contractor's yard. Mountainside Physical Therapy has been operating in a physical therapy office, retail antique shop, dating school, and commercial offices since '08. Ms. Williams has requested a rezoning through amendment of proffers that were attached to this parcel through several rezonings. The applicant has proposed a flea market, theater indoor and outdoor, food trucks, and professional offices. The Health Department commented that the applicant will need to hire a multi-sol evaluator and a PT to evaluate the size and current condition of the system, and it will need to be determined if the water will be under the purview of the Office of Drinking Water or the local Health Department, and comments from V.R. Pendy.
Great. Thank you for that. Mr. Conick, are... Okay?
Members of the question, good evening. David Conick, representing the applicant, Annie Williams, and Mountainside Physical Therapy. So, I think Ms. Summers has done an excellent job of summarizing the rather sort of complicated, very weird year, I think, history of this property. And I don't know how many of you recall it, and if you do, Mr. Henry Bradley, and maybe Mr. Kohler, and Sharp, that this property was originally in the 1986, '85, '86, or in stone agriculture. And when they came in, when the road, the road at that time was widened, it wasn't, that wasn't done until about that time. And it took a piece of the front of the property, and this is pretty much right next to the car. So they came in and proposed to rezonate. And there was quite a bit of concern about it, because it was going to be an extension of the existing and recently designated commercial district. And so there was some concern about, I guess, Mission Creek, or Dumbarton Creek, or whatever they call it. And so these conditions, the things were proffered to just do exactly what was done, and I think that was by Faith Mountain, to have their warehouse and shipping, and it was going to be a very kind of limited use. And then they expanded, they put the retail sales in the back, and then I think they sold their business. So then Crowning came in, the property was sold to Mr. Yates, and then Crowning came in, wanted a construction office there, so they amended the proffers again. And in the meantime, well, and then the present occupant has pretty much been there since 2008, really the operations haven't changed since 2008.
Mr. Conick, can you leave out an owner at some place in your cover?
Well, I don't know. Please.
I'm sorry, let me look.
Jerry Martin.
Give us the chain of ownership here, from Faith Mountain forward, please.
From Faith Mountain forward?
Yeah, Jerry Woodard.
It was Yates.
Or was it...
It was not.
Solomon.
There was one in between there.
Daniel Solomon.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I want your presentation to be correct.
Okay, thanks. I don't think that's exactly relevant, but...
But you're giving us a presentation, an attorney's legal ownership, you have a history of the property, and you left out about a five, six-year ownership.
Okay, but the uses were...
Was it?
What?
Was it?
I believe so, but it weren't in change to the proffers.
I'm just asking.
Okay. Anyway, the question now arises, we've got a new comprehensive plan that designates this as part of the commercial district, in the map, which is offended. And the use has been there, they're not proposing to change the footprint of the main building, or really the uses to expand and reconfigure it a little bit, there's a lot of space up there, and I'm going to let Manny speak for that. And they want to have a place, I think initially it's going to be like a pavilion for performances, dance performances in the back, and those would be in the evening, so it's not going to conflict, it's not going to make a lot of traffic during the day, whether you use it for physical therapy purposes, and pretty much the flea market is pretty much of a weekend type of thing during the day. So it's got a decel name, we're waiting for comments from the Highway Department. As far as the Health Department, let Ms. Summers summarize that they want. I would ask that, as you often done, make your whatever recommendation that makes subject to that, because that's an expensive proposition, and there's not a lot of point to go through the process if the zoning part, it's not going to fly. So we will obviously do that.
Subject to what? Sorry.
That the Health Department requires some water and certification, all that. That would be a condition to be approved. The Highway Department are hoping that if it goes to public hearing next month, or the month after, that they're going to have their comments saying that it's got a decel, I think they promised by August, but if they get it today.
They gave us a date in August, and they would definitely back that.
So it's got a decel lane there now, so I don't anticipate that that's going to be a problem, more or less formally, they have to come up and look at it. The parking is adequate for all these uses, and I do want to say that, and I did have a conversation with Dave actually today, about why this particular property is even in this kind of unusual status, that I don't think there's another property in the county that's quite like this. In fact, when it was done, which was already 37 years ago, I would say 33, 33, but I don't have to do a national vote, since '89. So it was, you know, different conditions, different situation then. And all the uses that are proposed are used, are used by way in the commercial district. So depending on what the discussion is tonight, we're prepared to maybe amend this, and just ask that the conditions be released or terminated, and it's just commercial, subject to whatever other requirements there may be, or we're going to go forward with it as it is for these particular uses, and ask that the proffer, the proffer that these are going to be the uses. We have to submit, we haven't done it yet, because I wouldn't be able to say, but we will get it in the next couple days, a statement of proffered conditions that is required by the ordinance. So that's basically it. I'm going to turn it over to Amy, if she can give you more detail, and if there are any questions, what's the other question? Okay.
Yeah, I guess I should just introduce myself, for those of you who don't know me. I'm Annie Williams. My husband and I moved here shortly after we were married in 2005. Correct.
Sure.
I'm in trouble tonight.
You don't miss that.
Sorry. I'm a little nervous from talking in public. And so my history with the property is that when I came to this county, it was kind of my dream to have a rehabilitation facility in a part of the world, with the offers, the mountains, and the breaks of all that we have here in Rappahannock. And as I drove by the property, 12625, Lee Highway, and it was empty, and for rent, even though I had another business already renting, the property always kind of called out to me, like, "Help me, help me, you need to be here." So with summer weekends, I opened Mountainside Physical Therapy, and have been operating there since then. I'm just growing my business, one visit at a time. I then added a dance center, because Mr. Yates had some extra space to offer, and I really love to offer dance for myself, as well as for everybody else. I've participated in the Rapp Theater events and parades, and have tried to become a part of the community, because the community of Rappahannock is what I've always dreamed of, a community that I never had as a kind of single mother, going from college to college. And so I feel a real bonding with Rappahannock County, and when Mr. Yates put up my property, or put up the property that's currently mine for sale a few years back, I was faced with the decision of perhaps having to end my business, or have my business compromised, or taking on the toll of adopting this property myself, which for me was a big chunk, because I'm just a little entity. I'm not a rich person that comes with a lot of money, and come from a different background. But, and so in hope to help preserve this piece of property from what I feared that it might become, and also to preserve my ability to continue my vision in Rappahannock, I bought the building. And at the time, I knew there were proffers on it, and I was advised by Mr. Conick to get those proffers changed before I purchased the property, but there was some time limitations and competition that didn't allow me to do so. And I know that my, what I'm currently doing there is not in the particular proffers, but I've been told that it was okay to do that when I have been, when I've asked several times. But my real reason to be here is to just make what I'm doing more adjunct with what it says I should be doing. And during the pandemic, well, shortly after I bought the property, the Antique Center in the back, which occupies 8,000 square feet, the manager of that building, or that operation decided to retire. So in an effort to continue to be able to pay my mortgage, I opened Hazel River Arts and Antiques. It's my ultimate vision to have a nonprofit organization in this county that offers an alternative option to health care. And I think I've spent 14 years of my life dedicating that to Rappahannock, and I hope I've helped a lot of people. I offer children, nonprofit, I mean, I offer children scholarships for dance on a regular basis. And I have a vision, I have acupuncturists, I have health nutritionalists. We offer Pilates, and yoga, and ballet, and hip hop, and all kinds of things. And we're centrally located to our community. And I'm just hoping to, ultimately, I'm here because I want to enlarge my dance studio. I have people that are coming to me, asking for small office spaces, and I'd like to have a place for people to buy lunch, or have coffee, and sit down. Ultimately, my ultimate vision would be to put up a barn-type structure on the top of the property that could serve as an indoor/outdoor type theater venue, because I've had a hard time finding a place for us to dance, and to offer that to the community. And I know that the Rapp community is also struggling to find a place to have that kind of community. I'd like to offer dances, and an opportunity for more people to enjoy just what I have to offer. And I'm a person of honor, and my purpose here is just to help the community, and to open up my possibilities of doing that.
Thanks a lot.
Appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight, and thank you, I appreciate everything you've done to help me move on, David.
Thanks. Good overview. Okay, so I think what we'll do is just see if members of the Planning Commission have questions for Mr. Conick, or for you. So obviously, it's a pretty informal gathering tonight, so I think we'll just see who has questions, and answer as you wish. And Mr. Sharp is a member of the Planning Commission, but he's sitting out there with his daughter.
I know.
Over in the online space. Did I understand you said you might ask now all the proffers?
There's only two.
Well, I mean, that's something unlike it's a guy that's been a commissioner, because it seems like every time there's a change in the unit, the proposed name and use, they come out and amend the proffers, because the proffers have been very specific about what each occupant on the property has wanted to do. So basically, we would like to do that if the commission looks on it favorably, and I know, what I, I talked to Mr. Perry today, and he basically asked me, "Well, all these conditions on this property, it's taking on commercially zoned property in the county that has all these conditions, and the history is the reason why." But I don't know that that history is relevant to the current status, especially with the thousands of recent. So if the commission is favorable in the time, we may amend it and just ask for that. If the commission is not favorably inclined to do that, we'll leave as being... If no, and it seems as if you say that a problem is...
I think they should take that.
This is...
Isn't it, isn't it?
That we're...
This is...
For...
This is a conceptual...
Couple questions. Part of the history of this property was that during Mr. Yates's ownership of it, he sold off a rear parcel of that land, a couple acres, and a house was built back there, residential. A residential house was built back there. And also, Mr. Yates came in to the Planning Commission with a proposal to build storage units on the property. And the tenant in the rear was opposed to it, and also there was opposition from people, I believe, to the west side of it. And he subsequently withdrew his application, I believe. And then subsequently, so he decided to leave Rappahannock in terms of this investment. So it does have a little bit of a different history, and it appears that maybe our overlay district is not entirely covered, this whole property is based upon the map and the comprehensive plan. So it looks like part of it's in L.A., and maybe part of it's not. In terms of this flea market, tell us about your concept of this flea market.
What I, was proposing to put up would be some type of barn that could have a multi-purpose use, that could be used for theater, dance, or indoor flea market occupation. I also have a parking lot up on the top that could potentially park 60 cars, and that might be an area where people could set up on the weekends or something. My reason would be to just help attract people into my area, but not to have a major...
So your concept of a flea market is an indoor flea market?
Indoor flea market, or in the parking lot areas.
And I guess your building that you proposed, building this pavilion, will be a conditioned, heated building?
Well, my, the reason I said pavilion in the first place is because I'm not prepared at this time to put up a half a million dollar building. And so I've always had to do things in little steps. So if I couldn't afford to put up a big building that would become a flea market, I could put up a pavilion where we might be able to have a concert, or a dance, somewhere to one I have just gone to recently in Wiltshire, Maryland, that just offered the community a place to have partially undercover. And that's what I would start with, that's all I could afford. Right now, I'm just looking to enlarge my dance studio within the building that exists, and to offer some spaces for people to rent for small offices. The future vision is, you know, certainly down the road, but during this pandemic, I have been one of the offices or businesses in this community that has persevered. I have had, you know, I have been at my office every day during this pandemic. I have a very large office space. Antiques and arts did not prevail during the pandemic, and I just feel like as a business owner, a property owner, I need to be able to plan what might be the next step in the event that the whole back of the building fails, which is probably 12,000 square feet, 8,000 square feet. So I'm just thinking ahead of what I can bring in this community, and preparing myself for the event that retail may not make it. And I have to have some creativity to maintain this property at the expense that I paid for it, or not only will I not be able to offer physical therapy, but I will go bankrupt. So I'm just trying to plan ahead and make sure that I'm in line with the county, and trying to move forward with my vision.
I think, when you throw this element of progressive development of this pavilion, where I start out as an open-air shelter, as I understand it, and for events, music, dance, whatever, and then move forward from there with a, maybe a closing it to a future use of a conditioned, year-round use, office space, whatever, you have neighbors there, and I think you have the issue of activity in the evening, the sounds leaving the property, and those kind of things that is going to elevate the attention to that specific request. So I think this, it's a very, it's a smaller site, it's not like you're going to have something on a 50-acre site that the site can absorb some of the activities, the noise, even though you're in a commercial area, you've got people living behind you up on the mountain, you've got people to the west of you, people to the east of you. I think that is an element that is, we're going to have to address very slowly. In terms of your building itself, I'm all in favor of you doing anything you want to do within the existing footprint, and not having a control over that. If you wanted to make it into restaurants, offices, whatever, I'm all in favor of you doing that. And just thinking about what you said, you know, the county is a food desert, and nobody wants to talk about it. We're listed as a federal food desert, because there's no place for somebody with EBT to buy food. And your property there has, did have a loading dock at one time, which is...
That's a three-living dock.
Which is so important in this day and time for delivery of merchandise. So, you know, a square footage there offers a unique opportunity for somebody to come in and take this food designation around the county. So I'm all in favor of whatever you want to do inside. When you move outside, it's a lot more planned and detailed.
So should be okay at the flea market, say indoors, where the previous antique store was?
Anything within the existing building, I'm okay with. When you build a new building, you've got your neighbors, you've got your footprint, you've got everything that goes along, there'll be a site plan involved. So all that's a whole new ballgame, I think.
Would... I'm not sure what I want to say.
Great. Do you have anything?
I think Al asked a lot of the questions that I would have asked. The flea market, I didn't quite understand, and I can see that the fact that if you're going to have something in the back on the hill there, where the big parking area is, that might be an issue for the neighbors. So you'll, I agree that anything in the building, that doesn't bother me. The, I didn't, I wasn't quite, I'm sure I understood the food service. You talked about a food truck, and I didn't quite understand what you were trying to do with that. Is that just to me?
Well, if I was to be having events, if it's not like a full restaurant facility, to be able to offer some vendors to come in, and offer some food trucks.
Okay. So not on a regular basis, because it said something about for employees, it seemed like you were trying to do it...
Well, part of, if you look at my little building plan within the existing building, there's an area there that could be a little coffee cup where people could get, you know, pastries, or little sandwiches, or, you know, I'm not looking to open a restaurant, I'm not looking to open a bar at this point. I'm looking to just provide, you know, when I have to go and find food, it's kind of hard. So I know that I have a lot of people that have expressed that while their children are taking dance, it would be great if they could go have a cup of coffee, and had people express that, you know, this is a real community meeting place, and when they meet up with people, wouldn't it be great if they could go sit down and have sandwich, or something within a facility? So that's where I was going with that.
Okay. And then I think with the outdoor pavilion, I mean, you would have issues of lighting, which would all affect neighbors too, not lighting, noise, and, you know, parking. So those are, that's probably the biggest question that's out there.
Actually, there's already lighting that was set up over top of the parking area, which has never been used. When I talk about having events, it's not going to be a weekly kind of issue. If it was, to have a little, I mean, it would be, you know, I've had a little, I had a concert at my house not too long ago, 10 movie, 10 people, classical music, and I'm not the person that's going to have big old Rapp concerts out there every other week. I don't have time to that. But if somebody else wants to plan it, that's fine. But, you know, I'm just trying to open up my possibilities. One of my frustrations has been, it's very difficult to find a place to show One of my frustrations has been very difficult to find a place to showcase my dancers in this county. And I have to pay the public school system a good deal of money and they offer maybe one weekend out of the year that they have availability. So I'm just kind of trying to overcome some of the hurdles that I run into in the county. And I'm amenable to anybody's objection. The flea market idea, I mean, we have people in Washington, Virginia. We have people at the, at the copper flats that are having farmers markets, things like that. I'm restricted from that, or not. So I'm just looking to recreate and see what I can do to keep this property going.
I don't have any other questions.
Right? Well, I like the idea of flea market. I love flea markets, so. And I know they're not loud and noisy and they're usually wrapped up by one o'clock anyways, so. I got a question for Michelle, maybe. In your notes, you say an addition, addition of a small theater building in the rear of the property shown on the conceptual site plan. Was there a conceptual site plan that I missed somewhere?
It was just basically a rectangle in the space that was kind of an overlay.
On the, on the plat? Is that what we're talking about, this?
There was a separate thing that had an overlay on it.
There's a, there's a, there's an image of the plat that shows the tracks, is that? And then that one?
No, not that one. There was something that was separate.
It's not, this is the inside of the building, right?
Yes.
Now, this, because it looks like there's two buildings mashed together, so I assume this is the the one with the long roof or the wide roof span?
It's one that's basically a warehouse.
Okay, so this doesn't incorporate, is your physi, is your therapy side in the other parts?
It's on the left-hand side.
So that's already its own separate thing, okay. I'm just kind of trying to visualize what this was all about. I kind of agree with Mr. Henry though, when it comes to the outdoor stuff. I mean, I imagine you say you don't, I think you said twenty-five students maybe that you're putting on a show and, I mean, I, I, do you envision that being on the back of your building and people bringing lawn chairs and sitting or building an amphitheater too or?
It's just a vision. It could be an amphitheater. I'm sure it would start out with people sitting on lawn chairs and moving forward. My, like I said, the ultimate vision would be to have an enclosed building that would be looking like a barn, so not to be an attraction to the flavor of Rasmussen County.
It means, like, and it's totally closed.
But also be able to open the doors. I mean, part of my problem during the pandemic is that people don't want to be in the space. So continuing to carry on exercise classes or dance classes.
You would just like to have an outdoor space.
Any of that has been limited because people want to be able to have the outdoor space.
You want an outdoor, covered outdoor space.
Something that would be a halfway kind of thing that you could use either indoor or outdoor. So that's my optimization.
And I, I kind of agree with you too. It doesn't make a lot of sense that this property, I mean, I understand the justice of it, but why it's being treated differently from other general commercial?
I have a great question. How does Florida?
Well, actually, the entrance to the property or to get into the parking and everything is on the other side from Clark Lane. So Clark Lane would not be involved at all. And I, my closest neighbor on the right, Mrs. Jenkins, said as long as I don't put up anything ugly that she doesn't want to see, that she's not an objection. So. I have had one other concert there on my grand opening where we had about a hundred and thirty people and four vans that came in one after another. And we didn't have any complaints at all.
Anything else right now, Brian?
No, sir.
Gary?
Yeah, thank you. I too would like a little, I'm still not sure I'm seeing what you're referring to as the conceptual plan, but I.
Is it for the building within the existing building? Is that the conceptual plan you're talking about, which is just?
There was a plat that's, you want it? No.
That's the existing building.
There was an aerial that had a, like a tissue paper thing on the top of it. It's, it's basically, I can show you on the aerial where it would be. It would be pretty much in the same place that S.B.A.'s had decided because the, the sewer system only allows a very small area in which this could be developed at all. And so there is only one area that is not part of my, can I show you? Could it help?
Please.
So here's the current property. This is the turn lane to get into property and it has a driveway up here. Hazel River is located in the back, the antique center right here. And there is a parking lot right here that could accommodate, actually, when I tried to calculate it, more than sixty cars. The, the house that was bought, when this was made, I guess turned residential again from the original commercial property that had been, is here. The septic system is right here. So the only place that you can really put a piece of barn at all is about right in this area right here. And it is a long, long Clark Lane, but it wouldn't be, none of the traffic would be directed towards Clark Lane. It would all come in through this area, be parked in this area. And that, that's all I know about it.
Thank you. I guess my comments are really consistent with my colleagues. I'm very happy with anything in the existing building. I think, I, I can appreciate that you've got to think about this incrementally in terms of financing and developing it. But for us to approve it, we need to think about it in its ultimate state, what we're, what we're allowing to happen there. So I think we need to reconcile that a little bit between the sort of, you know, potential and what you're actually asking us to, to consider. That is assuming we stick to the proffered rezoning. And I also kind of wondered about the, the food truck operation and some of these, some of these things where it seems like you would be potentially having multiple uses of the same parking area, like for flea market things. But anyway, I agree with Mr. Henry, indoor, anything, in the existing structure, I wouldn't have any issues. I do, I would say there are not really concerns at this stage. There are more questions about what you're actually asking us to, to approve. And, and that's all I have for tonight.
What?
My comments.
Yes. Mr. Curry, County Administrator.
I was following the plan and mission goes far. I think we need to have the county attorney look at the interplay between the general commercial overlay district and the underlying zoning. As you're aware, throughout the commercial overlay, there's many different kinds of zoning. From general commercial itself to perhaps residential. And what the ordinance says is that those areas within the general commercial overlay district as designated in compliance in two thousand and four, all uses permitted in areas whom general commercial shall likewise be allowed in the GCO district. So just because the underlying zoning is something that may be somewhat negated on in the overlay district on top of it. Just like the underlying zoning was residential, you can still do general commercial on this area because of the overlay district. Now, the overlay district comes with some extra requirements and there's some extra landscaping and different things you have to do to meet that district. I think this really is the way you can consider that the county attorney to, to really parse out that in a form. Now, that doesn't go over the entire parcel. As we stated earlier, it goes over, it covers the front building and a little bit in the back and probably not a little bit of the drain field, as we said. It may be part of where this other building is. But I think that's a very important input to how this application would be handled. Particularly if it is subject to general commercial, then all of those uses that they talked about that they won't have problems to would already be allowed by law. It'd be close to the overlay. Because it's in the overlay.
Except that it's clearly not all in the overlay.
Well, the portion that is in the overlay would be covered by the overlay.
Well, I have a question. When they were doing the overlay of the commercial room in that area, I had some question about that, why that property was kind of split across that. Then I was told at the time that this was these kinds of general thing, it wasn't meter by meter or. So if part of the property doesn't lie in the western zone, do I pay commercial taxes on it?
Well, your, your tax, your tax case, I mean, the use and value is not by U.S. accessory. It's independent from the zoning. But the zoning administrator is empowered to identify the exact location of the line based on the overlay.
So how would we, can we get that?
I think I'll ask the county attorney for that and by the way, you can also ask that maybe.
But you still got the issue that there's proffering property uses.
And it's just very confusing. Most places you don't have an overlay district in this case. And so those proffers are on the underlying domain of the property. That's why I say it's very complicated.
The proffers, don't, don't the proffers overrule the overlay district?
The proffers are attached to the zoning.
The underlying zoning, right. Right.
The prop, this proffer is what now?
They're with.
When you, when you proffer, a proffer simply is a zoning designation, it isn't included in the ordinance. And so instead of somebody saying, this is allowed to do anything that's in general commercial, they're saying, it's allowed to do anything in general commercial asterisk. And, and the asterisk is whatever that proffer includes. And so for a recent residential, we, I mean, there was a significant conversation. It was going to go from RR five to R two asterisk. You can't do everything in R two. You can only do the things that we have proffered to say that had eliminated a bunch of uses. But if there was an overlay district, then it would be very confusing.
So are you saying that when this was put into the overlay district, those proffers became mute?
Possibly. And that's why I said that is the interplay that needs to be valued by the county attorney.
Right. That's interesting.
Well, I think we need to get some vibes. I mean, you all need to get a lead, like, to know what that is and also delineate exactly what the line.
We're confused too on exactly what direction somewhat that y'all want to go in, you know. I mean, if you're talking about building a building, you know, you got to show us a site plan. You know, if, if, if you want, if you want to address the use of your current building on the inside of it, tell us that, you know, if we need to do any changes there, clear that up, let us know that. We're just kind of confused on, we want to help you, but we're kind of confused on exactly which direction you want to go.
Well, and part of that is, we need to know from, from the zoning administrator, I guess, the county attorney, exactly where the line is on the, on the plat.
Yeah.
You know, the plat, where is the, where is the actual limitation or boundary of the commercial overlay district? It depends depending on the county attorney of how that impacts the old property. Because I think the general overlay is saying in the effort.
And I think my question is, having bought this property and doing what I'm doing, what I'm asking is, what can I do to help the county and still be within what you would like to see within that space?
On that question, I'm afraid you're putting a little more on us than we can provide. It's, we can't sort of design this for you. Unfortunately, the way our system is set up, we actually don't approve. Like, Mr. Conick would rightfully correct me. For us to recommend approval of this, it's a thumbs up or thumbs down on something that you propose. So I, I personally would not have any comfort in kind of telling you what we think would be okay. I think it's a compliment.
Let, let me, let me just tell you a few more things from my standpoint as an appraiser, okay? You got a lot of square footage in that building and you got a lot of opportunities in that building. It's a modern building. It's built correctly. You got a very valuable property in what you have here now. The more you use that building, the more uses you come up with that building, the more people you put in it, the more needs you are going to have for sewer expansion. We don't have a public sewer, there will never be a public sewer there from Sperryville, I don't think, in my lifetime. So if you have extra room in the back that you're thinking about using where in close proximity to your drain field, if you keep on using this building in expanded use, you may need additional drain field capacity. You know, ten thousand square feet, fifty, fifty thousand square feet of water. So a smart thing to do is to keep that in mind and have a, a big enough reserve there to where, you know, if you end up having three hundred people a day using that building or four hundred people a day and food services and things like that going on, where you need a lot of capacity, you better make sure that you keep enough land back there to do that. Or you might be cheap yourself in a foot of it.
I agree. And if I can just address that a little bit, I think when it was, the drain field was put in for Rocky Mountain, they had approximately a hundred or more employees. And that's what it was planned for. I currently have twelve employees and, you know, I have fifty people in and out of the office a day. So I think we're very far from that point at this point. And what I'm hoping to do is not going to increase. Within the building, what I'm hoping to do at this point, which is only the first step, will not increase the capacity of people being in my building by more than maybe twenty-five people a day. And if you, if it would be more comfortable, I could take this step by step and ask you to rezone the front of the property, which I'm already occupying. And if the rest of it has to stay the way it is, that's fine too. Until I can come up with money and a better, and a, you know, a very secure plan of what I want to do there, that's fine as well. I just know that as it is proffered right now for retail and other, if I'm so limited in that ability, then at some point I might have to sell that property and then it wouldn't be protected from whatever somebody else wanted to do in terms of retail either. So, but it's, you know, this is kind of a matter of time.
Let me throw an idea on. And that is, what if we amend, amend the application so as to terminate the proffers as to the existing building in that footprint of the property? Because apparently the property is already bifurcated by the overlay zone anyway. And once we get the, and once we get the clarification from the zoning administrator of exactly where that line goes, from the county attorney, as Mr. Curry suggested of what, what the impact is, just lift the, lift the conditions on the commercial area that's in that, on that part of the property. And as. You know, tracks one, two, and three? What? What's the difference now? Where the big track where the building is and these little triangles that make up.
The triangle is unusable land.
Right.
It's a ditch. So track two is the other portion of the property that I believe that I have.
So, so, so track, no, or lift the, lift the conditions as to track one, if that's in fact where the line is? I don't know if that is.
No, it's, it's severance right here.
So I, I don't know. Maybe we should, maybe we could also propose to amend the overlay district so that it followed the actual track lines, but.
Yeah.
Well, my, my view is. Well, my, my view is you should talk to your client about what you want to do with the application and come back to us with the application that you want to get. So I, I would like to suggest, I'd like to actually make a motion that we table this consideration of this application pending a, a legal review of the interplay between the commercial zoning district and the overlay and to provide the applicant time to clarify the, the precise request in the application.
Um, okay. Mr., Mr. Light's put forward a motion to table pending county attorney review and more guidance from the zoning administrator and.
Is that part of the motion, Mr. Light, to have the line clarified?
Yeah, the, that was the interplay between the, the overlay district and the zoning, underlying zoning.
Well, I would second that motion.
Okay, motion, motion and second discussion?
Yeah, discussion. Uh, to the applicant, uh, we want to help you. We want to make your property more successful. We want to make it more sustainable. Uh, and don't view any of this as a roadblock. It's just like we're trying to get on the same level where you are and understand what you're trying to do. And this is exploratory right this moment. And we're just trying to fully understand what you're saying and figure out these ins and outs. But we wanted you to be successful there.
I appreciate.
Yeah, Ms. Williams, I do want to, I do want to thank you for the business you've built. I have constituents who use office space in your building throughout the pandemic. It saved them, it saved them. And my wife has been doing Pilates and she's completely addicted to it. And I know many people who benefit from your physical therapy services. And that kind of homegrown business in a small community like this, and the way you've described it is exactly how I perceive it, just as an outsider. And I know Philip Roseman and my daughter was in a ballet class a long time ago. So what you, what you've characterized it as, as far as I'm concerned, is precisely what you built. And, and you, you should be complimented for that and for your investment in the community. Because I think, I mean, I'm surprised it's only fifty people that go in, in and out of there every day. It seems like a lot more because frankly, everyone I know, it seems, touches that property and your services in some way. So thank you. And I just wanted to say that to amplify what Mr. Henry said, which is, yeah, we want to get it right and want to make sure that some of these complications can be ironed out in such a way that you don't have to worry about that kind of stuff and you can focus on your business in whatever form it eventually takes. So we appreciate your patience in that regard. Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Oh, it is a roll call vote, okay. Uh, Mr. Shulman?
Aye.
Mr. Kohler?
Aye.
Mr. Sharp? Uh, Mr. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Light?
Aye.
I also, thank you. Thanks a lot.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you, thanks a lot. It was a really good presentation. Okay, we, we do have two, um, just two discussions, two discussion items really under new business. And the, um, I'm gonna go ahead and just reverse the order. Mr. Sharp had asked that we add to the agenda a very brief discussion of planned unit development zoning designation, which I think stems from recent media and public discussion about a project in the town of Washington that is, um, basically being conducted under a planned unit development PUD zoning designation. And that's the, um, Rush River Commons property. So, um, without stealing your thunder, I'd go ahead and.
I mean, I don't go ahead and thunder. But just given the discussions of Tom Taylor's, um, rezoning proposal, several people brought up the fact that Little Washington was doing, Washington was doing maybe thirty-five hours. And it seemed like that was a much happier situation where the government, the locality and the developer or the owner were participating in the discussion and sort of helping to design it and come up with a product that was satisfactory. And my, my observation of this rezoning is it's like the applicant has to put forward something. Proffers cannot be requested, I guess. So basically, it's, well, we would if you would, if we wanted that, so. And it does seem like the, uh, the villages, which is where it's growth, should be according to our comprehensive plan. Maybe it's too constricting that of R five, R on five or two. As the only options, maybe, maybe there should be pockets of a development that is planned with multiple different uses. So I think that the town of Washington obviously has adopted that and is using it. And so I just think that it would be likely helped if the county would consider adopting such a program.
Okay, is, is everyone familiar with the concept, what, what a PUD zoning designation is and what it involves? Cause I had to read about it recently in a class I'm taking. Is everyone up to speed on the concept?
You getting there?
Okay.
Yeah, I guess I, I, I always want to comment on, I, I think part of the reason that PUDs are popular in these more densely denigrated areas is there's a lot more rigid requirements, like setbacks and other things that can need some flexibility to be creative. So I'm not sure what you'd be buying in our, in our general zoning area. Maybe within a village, like you say, maybe some designation of consideration of mixed use would be appropriate. I certainly would, would want to be very circumspect about where that would apply. I mean, I could personally imagine perhaps in an area like Amosville where there's already this sort of least well-developed, least clear, in my opinion, designation of the village that we could, it's a concept that's worth some consideration. I guess I'd like to understand better and maybe this is something we could, you know, ask, um, staff to, to, uh, to enlighten us on is what, what flexibility does that afford? My understanding of it, I, I guess part of it is the use and the multiple, uh, use. We already have, uh, in the case of residential configuration, you know, it's an average density with, uh, a possible plat designation. So I think in terms of configurations of lot sizes and, and the like, as we discussed in the, in the context of the recent rezoning application, there's already flexibility in how you configure the plot. So I guess I'm still struggling for what it is we're buying with this. I understand it in the town, in the case of the town of Washington, but it seems like the one thing that I can think of would be some, uh, use flexibility to combine commercial and residential in some way. I mean, I don't know if there's more on that available now, but that to me is the fundamental question here. Yeah, if there's a place, that's already, you mean.
Around the village.
So Alex, you want to take your property down there where you are right now, where the copper foxes and turn that into a commercial and residential?
Well, I mean, it could.
You could, is that, is that why you're bringing this up?
Well, I'm thinking really about something like Tom Taylor.
Well, Tom Taylor kind of dropped like a bomb, so I don't, I don't think, I don't think that's any kind of good example.
That's not really part of the why.
But it's on the use as much as it is on the, because again, I think when I have seen these discussions of these, you know, they're very popular in the, in the, in the high-growth suburban areas where you already have a lot of different uses and you're just trying to mix them together more flexibly. Yeah, like, well, like Little Washington's a town. But I'm, I'm not sure where, I mean, to me, the big question is which area would we, would we put in this? Because in a way, it would be, I think, a, a development encouraging, uh, step that.
And it would take, it would take property, you can only, anytime you see a, a putt going on, it, it's, it's, it's a sizable property, which you, you could have the mixed uses. And it's got water and sewer. And, you know, Little Washington's doing something down there and they got water and sewer. There's no other place in the county with water and sewer. You can't do it in Sperryville with, with the hodgepodge systems of, of wells that you have up there and some of them interconnected and all that kind of stuff that's going on. So you don't have the water supply to do it. And if you try to do a putt in Sperryville, you know, if, if this, if the outcry you got over going from seven lots to thirteen lots, the, the, the outcry to take ten acres or fifteen acres, whatever, and put on it twenty, thirty houses and some commercial or whatever other uses, you know, it's, it's just, it's just a broken.
It's going to be advantage.
It may be an advantage, but it's not gonna happen. It's a waste of time out here in this rural area.
Advantage of it in that particular location is that someone could afford to build the type of infrastructure like a bridge, go across two eleven and make it. I mean, it sounds like if that were the way it's been, then that property probably could be developed. And I'm not necessarily promoting that property, but a property like that could be developed.
Have you been absent since December and all the hearings and everything? Huh? Did you hear all this stuff? You want the petition for four hundred people and all this stuff? And you think that could be a twenty, thirty, forty unit development there if they had a bridge?
No, I'm not pushing that as an example.
But you're talking about as a prime example of where it could happen.
That's an example.
It could never happen there.
It's what, it's what would basically give you the impetus to think about reasons and.
Where about the fit, but there's the awkward thing that's sort of compromised.
You could, you know, with, you know, your Eileen factory, is, are you gonna co-op that? You're gonna do a putt there? What are you gonna do there?
Well, I'm, I'm not thinking about it for that because that's, that's not the.
Well, a putt can be different things, you know, in different mixes of uses, you know, whatever, so.
So maybe that's a good idea.
I don't know, Alex.
Yeah, that wasn't.
Yeah, no, it's, you raised it, it's just a point of discussion, which, which is fine and appropriate.
Utility in this county appears to have bad utility in the town of Washington.
Yeah, and the, I guess the distinguishing feature there is we have one town with its own local ordinances and that's where that zoning designation happened to have developed and we don't have another town in the county. Um, so there's, I suppose, that political division side of it, which leads to the logic of why they have that on their books in part and the sewer system, obviously.
I mean, I, I will accept your original point, which is it, maybe, maybe there's some kind of Rappahannock style version of this that isn't as ultimately flexible as other contexts. And, you know, if, if, if there's a way to, um, you know, better integrate the consideration of the, of the plat and the zoning, uh, you know, to deal with some of the, the challenges we had considering that last rezoning application, I'm not saying that there's, and I can see no virtue in this, but as it's generally used in other places, it feels like a non-starter unless there's a way to sort of define this in a real Rappahannock kind of way.
Maybe there is.
Uh, yeah.
Anyway, so my point is, is it worth discussing at all? Is it worth telling people, learning something about it just in case they're favorable after the COVID days? And to automatically reject this with the same sort of sill? But it doesn't mean that it has to be carried forward.
We automatically rejected, uh, solar fields last month. So I think this is far, far, far beyond solar fields. So, you know, I think, I think we got a lot more things on the plate that we could pay attention to.
My, my good ideas are usually rejected out.
You have, you have fifty years.
At least the first time.
And, and if we're gonna look at things like that, I mean, you might look at, we have, our village residential is one acre. And, uh, you know, maybe that needs to be looked at, uh, in the villages itself. Maybe you could go to, uh, something smaller in the villages. A village residential could be a, a tighter zoning. I think it's, the famous land planner Dick McNear once said, yeah, if you build, people are like rats, they follow sewers. So if you want to get a lot of comment, people fired up and Rappahannock, go ahead and put half-acre lots in, in Amosville with water and sewer. Cause that's what you need when you do half an acre lots. And you're gonna get people there, you're gonna get people fired up. And I don't think that's the flavor of Rappahannock County.
Nita's writing furiously, Alex, I think you just threw out the quote of the week. So made about rats and sewers and.
And people.
I just think we need to look at all, we need to at least think about all these things.
I think that was Dick McNear's famous quote of Fuck Your County. Kind of often quote Pete Estes.
Well, what I'll, what I will, what I will do, um, and, and it's totally appropriate and reasonable to do so is I'll, in my update to the board of supervisors on the last planning commission meeting, I'll mention that this was a topic of discussion and I will try to summarize it as succinctly as possible. Um, anyway, Mr. Sharp, thank you for that.
Thank you for the thoughts.
Sure. Um, so before we jump into the last item on our agenda for tonight, I just wanted to see if everyone might be available on Wednesday, August eleventh at six PM. Six only because I think what I'm about to propose is gonna take a little time. This would be a work session, try to get some legal counsel lined up and or Mr. Goff plus any outside technical advice on further review of the, um, renewable energy stuff. That was discussed at our last joint meeting with board of supervisors and the ordinance that was adopted. Just, we've made a commitment to continue working on that, so I want to uphold that commitment. That's the first thing I'd like to handle during the work session. The second thing, um, we're awaiting a, a draft sign ordinance and I'm hoping that by August eleventh, we'll have that to review and wrestle with. And then the third thing, and this is, uh, the segue into our next discussion topic, um, this is one of the, one of the items in this tracker that we, we have from last year and that's been added on to. And this, um, this is, uh, what I was hoping we'd discuss for a little while tonight, just to get the ball rolling. And this is sort of on the clumsy, uh, nature of the various event, field event provisions of our zoning ordinance and how we can try to true that up in a way that protects people, protects citizens, but also allows for reasonable uses on reasonable properties. So going back to my question, um, does that date seem to work for everyone?
What time are you talking about?
I, I think six PM and it would be here in the courthouse. It's a Wednesday, I try to follow it Wednesday, maybe for a couple of hours. And I really do, my goal is really to have some outside legal and or technical assistance there, particularly with regard to the renewable energy stuff. Okay, all right. Um, so just to kick off this discussion, we don't have to belabor this, but, um, I wanted to get going on. Mr. Curry, would you be willing to just explain what you pulled together in my request? I really appreciate it because it helps a lot. These are the two documents that everyone has in front of them.
The planning commission is aware that the board supervisors, um, asked at some point in time in the past for planning permission to look at the nonprofit, um, events and how they're permitted in our zoning ordinance. Uh, and I think that followed the, uh, John Jackson concert in Oakland and why some things are allowed by right by the zoning administrator and others may have to go through the public hearing process like field properties. And then sometime later, the topic came back to the board and from it for a different flavor and, uh, was more about events on, uh, smaller parcels. And there was a, uh, individual in the county who I think has a tourist home, has a couple acres, um, and.
Nearly five, nearly five.
Nearly five on good weddings. And there's no avenue for that person to do that, um, in the current zoning ordinance because you can't be a conference center which allows events because you need two more acres. And, um, some of the other uses don't apply because of the restrictions in the ordinance. So the overall question is, well, does the, does the planning permission board and the board of the community want to allow small parcels to have events? Um, and so the board talked about that and, and during that discussion, uh, I created more work by saying, I think you really need to look at the full continuum of those, whether they be a use or then a use slash structure combined. Or then a use slash structure combined. Many localities have gone through this process. Uh, some, uh, permit uses, some don't. My last locality just didn't permit uses. You wanna have a, a for-profit gathering on your parcel, you go right ahead. Uh, many other use localities do permit, we do. And there are a lot of reasons why you would want to, because you don't want a thousand of your closest friends showing up on your neighbor's property and also having a three day, uh, woodstock event. Uh, so there's reasons why you would wanna have protections. But there is an obvious continuum that goes from somebody who happens to have a tourist home, wants to have fifteen people over and have a wedding and charge for it. Up to some field party with multiple thousands of people. And there's different levels of protection that the community probably should provide and different levels of, uh, uh, application. Uh, process that one would have to go through. So there may be some that they would be appropriate to be by right. Right now, there are some for nonprofits, uh, but maybe a smaller use on a large parcel is clearly something that could be by right. Uh, whereas a a large use on even a large parcels, you're probably gonna do some sort of public hearing process. And being clear that a lot, like for Mr. Fletcher's field.
Yep.
It just doesn't line up very well with anything we do and you have to have this. The way it's worded is just not good. And then it take the leap to, well, now you have structures that are event centers, like a conference center. And their sole purpose is to be built to do this sort of thing. You probably wanna be thinking about categories of those. How big do we want? Do we wanna cap them? Is the acreage amount that you have in our ordinance appropriate? If we do want in this community to have a rural conference center, which is basically one of the definitions here.
Hmm.
Uh, should be twenty acres, fifty acres, hundred thousand acres. What should, what should be the minimum and what should be the right buffer to keep the rest of the people in the area from suffering? So that's kind of a long-winded way to say that I think there are ways that the commission can devise a reasonable continuum. Or something that is no worse than when you have a family reunion at your house, it just doesn't have to be a commercial event, doesn't need a permit. To something that is like, uh, the Cooter Fest thing or whatever happened in the past that I've heard about when there's thousands of people.
Yeah.
Uh, so what I did, I just went into the ordinance and I pulled out the definitions and the uses from the newspaper. That I thought were event related.
Yeah.
Uh, and it's really not a clear continuum now. And the the burden on the zoning administrator is when somebody comes in and asks to do something.
Yeah.
She has to decide, does it fit within one of the uses that's permitted in the ordinance? And, you know, how does it fit? Uh, or does it not fit? And then if it does fit, which category does it fit into? And there's continual confusion between what a conference center or a resort is as compared to a conference slash convention center. One has, one doesn't have.
Correct.
Uh, and I think the, uh, planning commission got into some of these definitions a little bit when we looked at the lodging side of those things.
Yeah, and I will just, uh, really appreciate that overview and I'll just tell you, one of my constituents. Uh, who has a special use permit to operate a tourist home. And I'm certainly not the first person to stand in line to cheerlead tons of tourist homes all over the county. It's not something I I've really been excited about for a number of reasons, revenue being one of them and the limited revenue that comes to the county. But, um, it's basically, there's a commercial turn lane. Um, it's a very sufficient right of way. And she came to our zoning administrator in late twenty nineteen with an application. And just as Gary described, tried to fit in and her acreage did not meet the minimum acreage for. Is it a conference center, if I remember correctly, which would have been what? A minimum of ten? Yeah, and so it seems, you know, in talking with my constituent, it seems it's a pro- proposed relatively light. Use of a property with a commercial turn lane, significant right of way, and she's already operating. Basically, uh, an unattended hotel anyway, and it's a flat, nice parcel. It would be not disruptive and it's really weddings. And then we had, I recall, another applicant with a large property on five twenty-two, kind of fell in the same situation. Although it wasn't an acreage issue, where she came in and said, I wanna have a conference center retreat, but really the hook was to have weddings. Um, and she also had a special use permit for a tourist home. So one route that was proposed, uh, to me, um, was perhaps there'd be a way to tack on to special. Tourist home special use permits, some kind of provision to allow additional uses. But, um, I think Mr. Curry wisely thought that that was not the way to address this, which is how this all got wrapped into this larger question of cleaning up our ordinance. And I like your characterization of a continuum of uses, um, which I think makes sense. Because you just described pretty much all the ones that we've we've heard over time, from Cooter Cooter Fest to Bill Fletcher's proposal to everything in between. So, um, but this is really just to provide some context and it's on our list of things we really wanna knock out, among others. And I'm just trying to accelerate a little bit our work and to the extent we need outside help. I think the work session approach should should help us kind of get some additional ordinance language out there for.
This may be an area where if you find outside help, they could bring in some example ordinances.
Yeah.
A series of ordinance language from other localities and say, well, here's player A, B, C, D. And then the planning commission can say, well, I like B or I like, or A or B.
Right.
Rather than try to completely recreate.
Which is not dissimilar to our approach on the sign ordinance. Yeah. Okay, well, I've said enough. Anyone have anything they wanna say generally on this? Just.
Well, I I would just, I mean, I think we have grappled with this in a lot of different contexts. I think there's a pretty clear, not only a continuum, but there's some other distinctions, you know, indoor versus outdoor events. Uh, yeah, uh, profit, for-profit, nonprofit, how many you can have at a certain period of time, noise, light. I think there are certainly conditions we can do a lot better job. I think the way it is now is the is the result of a lot of incremental changes. That just don't come together in any logical way. So I certainly agree that we should, you know, uh, look for ways to to, uh, deal with the. You know, the 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 venue and the and the the use that can be ongoing and allow a certain number. I mean, I think we we did this with the the, um, the one bed breakfast in Amosville. I thought had a, because they came in with a pretty clear ask, we had a pretty good structure for, um, kind of a, uh, a B and B and event center. You know, in the past, uh, era, there was kind of a, uh, an informal understanding that B and Bs sort of did events. And every, as long as nobody complained too much, it was okay. And that was kind of how it, that was kind of how it was, uh, for quite a long time. And I think we're probably well beyond that period and I absolutely agree that this should be, this should be cleaned up. And it seems like it should be easier because it doesn't have the the technical limits, but it's a lot of subtleties of. You know, what is a festival? What is a carnival? It seems like every word, you know, is hard to know exactly what it means. And that's part of why I think we have the mess that we have, you know?
Yeah, I just think it's, I mean, for me, it's, I mean, I haven't been in local government for that long, but it's one thing that. You know, Mr. Henry at our joint meeting talked about bad government. I I feel like another form of bad government is if so, if a citizen who's investing in our community. Comes in and can't because of the imprecision of, or the vagueness, or the, um, incompleteness of our zoning ordinance. Can't get a solid answer, drops a check for seven hundred dollars and does all the work only to find out that they don't fit anywhere. That's bad government and that I just, um, I I want us to get in a position where people don't have to, um, come in. And and suffer weeks, months waiting for an answer only to find out that there is no answer and they can't really do what they wanna do. Because of the way the ordinance is written. So that's kind of my customer service goal. Um, for citizens who seek guidance on on matters like this from our zoning administrator. And make her life easier too.
Yeah, you know, I'll just throw out, I know, Mr. Henry, you wanna speak. I think the other example where we dealt with this was the Millard Barn. There was a lot of discussion on that. That was another one that was.
Yeah. I wasn't around for that, but I remember.
That that was a success, you know, we worked that out and, you know, he got what he wanted, but, you know, there was. Things put in place in that application that, uh, protected Sperryville and also allowed him to do his events. And it also protected the applicants in terms of the fire protection that, uh, that we found out. That was a major issue there that didn't exist. So, you know.
I wonder, I wonder what, how that's.
Um, it's a.
Right.
I mean, these things, they're they all exist. I believe it's a, I believe it was a conference center classification, maybe, but I don't quote me on that.
Once you get into, if you fit through the big door, then you can use a bunch of conditions that are great to shape it.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's what was done there. And who would have guessed that, you know, we're talking about the adaptive use of a huge donkey barn, you know?
Adaptive use is a different.
Well, and I don't.
Didn't put that in here, but.
Yeah, well, that's another, that's another issue. I don't know that.
You know, you know, I understand what you're doing, but also, you know, it it's kind of ironic that, uh, you know, uh, you mentioned the Fletcher properties came out. I guess the two thirty-one property and five hundred and two property came out and they crashed and, you know, and and nothing more was said. But but about those and years have gone by now. And now, you know, we're we're talking about, you know, an example of somebody who has less than ten acres. And and has a tourist home or whatever and is complaining about they can't have a wedding event and now they're gonna change.
Yeah.
I I got, I got a real bad, that's bad.
Well.
That's bad.
Well.
We're we're changing the ordinance with one person in mind who has less than ten acres. And we had somebody who had fifteen hundred acres and they got thrown in a trash can and never got.
Yeah, no, my, my.
That's bad.
My points, my points.
Here, one more thing here too. You know, when we worked on these homes on on the lodging and all that, we came to a point of ten acres. With a a threshold.
Right.
The of of having some integrity in the community that you didn't go below there on the rentals. You know, if if we make it so that everybody can do everything in the ag areas, then just take away the zoning and let people do everything. There has to be some base where you come from, where, you know, well, I'm sorry, you know, you got less than seven acres. We're gonna, we're gonna tweak it and allow you in. That's.
Yeah.
You know, just just throw everything out.
No, but my my, that's why, that's why I added, um, this point about, um, improving, improving sort of ex or making expectations.
That's not an improvement. That's making, that's making one person.
No, no, let me finish. I'm talking, I'm talking about even Mr. Fletcher, because it's clear to me, I observe that as an outsider, not local government. I observe what happened. And he, there was a lot of pushback on that. So what I'm, whether or not, whether or not one person does or does not. Get, um, the right to do something on their property, small or large, is not my interest. My interest is this, I've heard now very specific examples since I've been in my position on the board of supervisors, a couple of them. And the one, the one I'm giving you is the most immediate. It's it's one that got me thinking, not so much about accommodating one individual. But rather, how is it that somebody can put in an application with a big check and not get a clear answer about whether they can or cannot do something? And so to me, it's it's just cleaning it up. I'm not, this isn't, this is not my intention to carve something out for one individual. I'm just telling you that that's an anecdote, among others, that led me to the question, shouldn't this be cleaned up? And I think we can all agree that, um, I mean, we have the ability to structure this however we want, no acreage, if that's one of the standards, you know, I'm fine with that. But no, I didn't mean to suggest that I'm trying to accommodate one person on a small property. Because in fact, that's not my goal. My goal is to make this more predictable and more standardized for anyone. The Mr. Fletchers or whoever who come along to know what exactly we allow and don't allow and where we allow it and where we don't allow it. So.
Mr. Henry, I would say that one of the main reasons why I told the board, I think you need to do more work. Is my experience in twenty eighteen, I could just land here and have to go through the Fletcher application and seeing how it it didn't work well.
Yeah.
And think, and then if we want to allow events, then we ought to look at this whole continuum and get it straight. And and, you know, is there harm to have four events somewhere, you know? Maybe not if you put the right things in place.
Right.
And so if 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 the body can identify those right things more carefully, then the applicant doesn't have to spend a whole lot of time and money. To go devise some big plan, uh, that costs them a lot of money.
Correct.
To see, to come in and just have someone to tell them no.
Correct.
If they can say, well, I gotta do A through F, if I check those boxes, then I've got a much more likely chance of getting that permit. Then I think you tend to, you fix some of those issues.
I don't think we're, okay, I understand what you're saying, but I don't see necessarily we're we're selling permits. I mean, if you if you pay the fee, that's not a a guarantee you're gonna get your permit, actually.
Right. But we we firm the fee, yeah, we want, he mentioned, because.
Yeah, to use a technical term, when I found out the background on that, it was a fuster, you know, because the, a fuster. F U S T E R, we'll leave it at that. But, I mean, the person came in, provided a check, provided an application, had some expectation that there would be this review. And then there'd be meetings before the planning commission, et cetera, and only to wait some period of time to find out that it was a nonstarter and here's your money back. And that's a waste of that person's time and resources, and I just don't think that's good government out. And so whether whether we end up in a place where there's nothing in the county that is allowed on anything, no, no events on any parcel. Less than ten acres, fine. And hey, I'm I'm all for the ten and twenty on the on the A and C tourist home stuff. I mean, I love that. I love that. It's all about land buffer, et cetera. I'm just saying, let's straighten this out in a thoughtful way so that we don't have these silly circumstances where people are wasting time and money. It's not good government, so.
Yeah, I I guess I'd like to, I mean, I I think we're pretty far from debating the merits and individual solution. Uh, you'll certainly hear no argument from me that the current ordinance isn't broken. It doesn't make any sense. Uh, there's this, it's partly written about general uses and partly written for individual events. There's no rhyme or reason to it in its current form.
Yeah.
And it 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 certainly deserves to be fixed. I'm not sure it's the worst part of our ordinance, but it certainly.
It's one. I mean, let's just make progress. So we've, we've got signs, we've got renewable energy, we have this, and let's just keep chugging along. So, anyone else?
One of.
All right. I appreciate you just thinking about it and that was really the goal tonight is just to get everyone thinking about it. So, um, thank you for that. I hereby open a special public comment period for candidates for local office.
Well, unless we get as candidates, I'm just a candidate, so. Some of them who were there, these were.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it. I was just messing with.
Carnival thing about the five days, a lot of discussion when it was originated and it was really intense to be with about the firearms. And there was like every one of them in those days had an annual carnival event, which was a major fundraising. And that's, that's the carnival less, that's where the less than five days thing came from. And that's really all anyone talk about. But then you have things like, I think, John Henry, which no one actually got one, uh, up up there in Flint Hill.
Yeah.
And he has a nonprofit, so he was kind of shoehorned into the.
Yeah.
To the nonprofit. And I don't think it was ever conceived, much less intended, that somebody could just establish a nonprofit sort of theater. Group or whatever it is and be able to have those kind of events by right, as long as you each one. Theoretically, each one is less, is only one day or a day afternoon, you have unlimited number. Whereas that was a distinction with Fletcher was a for-profit and but the uses.
Right.
I mean, when you look at it, I hope the commission will focus on the the zoning aspects of it, the traffic, the noise, the lights, the hours of operation. The effect on the neighbors and the sewage.
Yeah.
That it generates is is all the same.
Yeah, exactly.
Whether it's for-profit or not-profit, people go, use the toilet, it doesn't matter. And the cars and all that, it's all the same. So i- in that respect, it's another reason that really just, you know, needs to be ironed out.
Yeah, and it's a, it's an event-rich place that we live in. Clearly, it's pretty, people like to gather and I think it's, I mean, it's not the most critical thing to iron out. But it's one that we should. I'm sorry.
Well, I just was reminded of another, uh, con- contextual element and histor- Well, I just was reminded of another, uh, con- contextual element and historical one, and that's the whole winery aspect of this, because I think there are special protections for certain of these facilities. And then I remember that was the, I think it was the Farfalut Winery.
Oh, wow.
That had, that had, uh, you know, lots of challenges when they started doing balloon rides and fireworks displays and a lot of things that were, there was a question about, you know, what is inherent to the operation of a winery? So, you know, the problem is, a big area with outdoor, it's hard to imagine all the different things an event could be uh, from Woodstock to, you know, a a a thirty-person wedding with a with a violin. There, the range is pretty, uh, is pretty, uh, hard to characterize. So I do think the approach that you've outlined of trying to stage it and and layer it makes a good deal of sense. And I think that's the path we should try to pursue.
Well, I appreciate all, I mean, really, I I benefit personally. I mean, there's a real brain trust here, and I appreciate hearing everyone's views on it and hope that you will spend all your waking hours thinking about how we straighten this out and that you have very crisp ideas on how to do so on August eleventh. So, thank you, thank you, thank you. Um, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And that's Mr. Light second. Uh, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Thanks a lot. Thanks a lot.